Call the meeting to order, call the roll. Trustee Fenton?
Here.
Trustee Dodge? Trustee Calandrello?
Here.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katsinas?
Here.
Trustee Malani?
Here.
Mayor Pico?
Here.
Please rise up and place. Much allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of September 21st, 2020 Committee of the Hall of Minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Hall of September 21st, 2020.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll. Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge? I'm sorry. Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
2020 Land Development Code amendments.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to recommend to the Village Board of Trustees approval of the 2020 Land Development Code Amendment Number Two, as recommended at the September 29th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, as fully referenced below.
Second.
Ed, could you give us a brief review?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the other members of the committee. This item was presented to the Planning Commission on September 29th. It was received unanimous of approval to move forward. These code amendments before you tonight are others that have brought to the committee previously and are just looking for some feedback on some of those that are included. The updates include updates to the sign code, outdoor seating requirements, an update to clarify the standard for sanitary manhole installation requirements, as-built electronic data requirements, so requiring as-built plans after development is completed for Engineering Division, update to our storm sewer and stormwater detention design standards. This is in regards to the new rainfall data that MWRD has now adopted. We've made an update to make a general provision, so this doesn't have to be updated every time their regulations change. Update to unshielded accent lighting along properties along Interstate 80, update to our fence requirements, and finally, an update to the discussion converting new residential detention ponds from being publicly maintained to be privately maintained. So that's sort of what we went through before. We've had this discussion previously about the flagpoles and the signage. We're revising the language so that in a residential district, this was after research between the developers and property owners that brought this to our attention, but also some of the standards, basic standards that we saw in the industry. One freestanding flagpole per residential lot with a height not to exceed 24, or 20 feet and size not to exceed 24 square feet in area. For non-residential lots, we'll be updating the standard of the proposed amendment will allow three, no more, a maximum of three groundblaced flagpoles not to exceed 35 feet in height and the total area of the flag not to exceed 60 square feet. In temporary signage, this is the item that we discussed as opposed to specific provisions for an instance where they could use it, such as a special event. We will include those, but a business will be allowed no more than six permits for temporary signs per year and no permit will be, each permit will be added for a maximum of seven days. The total for a calendar year would be 42 days. This is mimicking what the standard was before, but just eliminating a review process for the Development Services Department, so we would just be able to issue these over the counter, subject to them being, still having one available to use. Our outdoor seating requirements were updated to mimic what happened this past year, so if temporary outdoor seating is going to be considered, it is, it reads specifically that in the case that a governmental agency issues a mandate that limits the occupancy of restaurants, this would be permitted via the special event permit process. So similar to what we did this year, the village or Development Services will be able to evaluate these on a case-by-case basis. Any business looking to do that would have to have the owner or landlord approval and the review will basically ensure that they're not jeopardizing their existing parking for them and the other tenants if that's applicable, and we will institute things such as the vehicle protection and, you know, appropriate ingress egress. This is another request that came up from a developer along Interstate 80. They just recently completed their building there. They have seen this in use in other areas where they use unshielded accent lighting as a portion of, to highlight some of the building elements. They did provide some pictures that were provided by the developer. This is something that they've seen commonly. Essentially, what we would be proposing in this amendment is something that would generally only be applicable now to those properties along I-80 as sort of a test case to see if there's any unintended, I guess, consequences of this, but initially, we brought it, we're bringing it to the committee now to see if there's any reason why we shouldn't move forward with this amendment. The village does already allow uplighting of architectural features. This would be lighting that's incorporated into the building facade itself, so that's the key distinguishing factor. At no point will it be faced towards any residential area, and the intent is to draw more attention to our I-80 district. So this is the, I guess, the images provided for the specific tenants. We have made updates to our fence requirements that will require a minimum of three inches height to, for the fence to be raised above grade in order to allow storm water to pass through. The fences will be evaluated on an individual basis, because that three inches needs to be exceeded, and the intent of the amendment will require that however much off the ground the fence is required to go, that height will, that will not count towards the height of the fence. So no matter what, if they have, if there's three inches here, they'll be allowed three inches more, then instead of the six foot, it'll be six foot three, but that will be compliant based on this code provision. And then finally, the privately owned detention ponds for, for new developments and specifically for, the change would be for residential development. So we've discussed this at length in different meetings, but essentially, the changes that were made were relatively minor in terms of the language that's already in the code, and then there's a provision that we're, I'm going to suggest to the committee to get some feedback on before we move forward to the full board approval. In our, in Section 6-409, it talks about the acceptance of stormwater systems and stormwater detention. We're looking to, instead of accept these systems, we're approving them for compliance. The village is not going to accept them into their stormwater system. They're making sure that they met, as built, they met all the requirements of the design. They are also, on private property, we're just changing this, previously, the maintenance of stormwater facilities located on private property were the responsibility of the owner of that property. We're just saying within the village will be the responsibility of the owner of that property. The village code or the land development code already requires that when these facilities, stormwater facilities are privately maintained, that an HOA is established and a specific maintenance agreement for that pond is developed, reviewed, approved by the Development Services Department, and it's also required to be recorded. So that was previously in the code. I assume that we haven't utilized that provision in recent history, just because there hasn't been that many large-scale residential developments that were developed recently, as well as put in a homeowner's association. So some of those concerns as to how a resident would be aware of this, or how would they know prior to them purchasing the lot, they would be made aware of it because it is recorded against their property or the property that they would be seeking to purchase. And then for clarification, I added this provision so that in one section, they understand that not only do they have to privately maintain it, a homeowner's association has to be established. It must be established in accordance with Section 5-112 of Land Development Code, which that section speaks to how privately owned either utilities or stormwater facilities have to be, would require them to be maintained or put these provisions in that this agreement is recorded, and then the village will also be establishing for these new residential developments, a dormant special service area that the intent is never to activate it until such time that the HOA either disbands or is not compliant with the maintenance responsibilities. The village would use this as a funding mechanism to do the work necessary on the pond, activate the special service area, and recover the funds that they spent. So, and I know we've talked previously about the equity issue for existing residents, as well as for new residents coming in. Existing residents, to generalize, would have the stormwater facilities already being maintained by the village, whereas new residents, subject to this code change, would have an HOA, be paying an HOA to maintain it. Currently, the village does charge a fee. Let's see here. On the water bill, they charge a fee for water, storm, and sanitary. It's a service charge based on the consumption. So the idea I'd like to present to the committee is something that we're still working out, the logistics with our finance department, and we're still working with legal to make sure that this is something, a change the village can make, but for the service charge for the stormwater facilities that the residents are already being charged, the logic here is you would assume, just very generally, that for stormwater, the maintenance of stormwater facilities is 50% of that money would be for the storage of the actual water, either onsite or during a storm event, and 50% of that money would be spent on the conveyance of that water through the entire stormwater system. So if a resident was paying a homeowner's association to maintain a portion of it or maintain the storage facility onsite, then these residents potentially, I would believe, or potentially would be subject to a credit and 50% of that fee that they were already paying on their water bill. We, that's sort of how we're attempting to address the equity issue. If, from a legal standpoint, that's something that the votes can actually enforce, then we will move forward with that amendment, but I wanted to present that to the committee tonight to get some direction with whether or not that's sufficient to address some of those equity issues that we brought up in the past. With that, I will happily answer any questions.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I had a question about fences, Ed.
Yes.
When a resident obtains a fence permit, is there also a required field inspection upon completion of that fence?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So then you can carefully gauge if the inches are met by the drainage?
Absolutely. So as part of the final, they'll be checking the height of the fence, as well as the, what the intent will be, or the process will be, whoever reviews the fence permit, with it being issued, they will indicate the distance from the ground, the total height that it will be, and then when the inspector is there, he will see that on the plat, the notes, and he'll be able to enforce that.
Has Orland always inspected fences, or is this a new addition to the code?
We have always inspected fences.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Pico? Trustee Dodge?
Ed, multiple questions.
Yes, sir.
So we'll start with the, with the fences. You said that we're going to do three inches off the grade and then adjust the height of the top of the fence?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense. I guess the nature of the fence is going to dictate, is three inches above the limit for all fences regardless of the type of fence?
Right now, that's the way it reads. Yes.
Okay. So there's some fences that are, let's just say they're a privacy fence and they're solid wood all the way down, and then there's others that are simply open.
Correct.
We're going to have the same three-inch standard for all of them, including the variation on the top?
So that's the minimum, yes. The minimum will be three inches, subject to a review, and it's across the board for per the style of fence currently.
All right. I guess, you know, it, the thing I think we should think about, and I don't think that this is, it's a high consequence, low probability event, so we're clear. You got a small enough dog and you got an open fence, given the kind of issues we have around here with coyotes, yeah, I think that we should probably maybe, depending on the type of fence, think about that three-inch rule.
Okay.
Because I've seen, they're, they're not wrought iron, they're what, aluminum these days? You guys know the kind of fence I'm talking about.
Correct, yeah.
You know, you've got a big enough slat, small enough dog, three inches of clearance, you know, okay, something gets out. So I guess I would, I don't know if we want to make this as a formal change, or before it comes back to the board, give that a think, because I think in some cases, it's worth consideration. A solid fence that disrupts water flow, we all know we've had problems with that. Jack. Open fences, I am less convinced that three inches is helpful based on the bottom of the fence.
Fair enough. So that, just to clarify, the, to look at would be, if it's a solid fence, for sure the three inches, if, depending on the type, does it still interfere as much with the flow?
Yeah, exactly, because if it's an open fence, you don't have a water flow problem.
Okay.
All right, so that's, that's one thing. On your sign ordinance, I just wanted, on the 42 days, we're allowing six times per year?
Yes.
So the total that business can have a temporary sign is 42 days?
Correct. Not concurrent.
All right, it wasn't, the way we worded it, it said concurrent, so I just wanted to make sure, I'm just clarifying, it's 42 days total for a calendar year.
Correct.
Correct? All right. And then I had a conversation with, I'm sorry? And my last question is on the, on the ponds. You know, I get the policy, and I'm playing it back, we've got more discussions to come as to whether or not, how we're going to address the fairness issue.
Okay.
Correct?
Well, I'm, what I'm proposing is that every resident already pays a fee on their water bill, and that account is used for overall village-wide maintenance of stormwater facilities.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're going to have to, I think in fairness, we're going to have to address something, so what we're saying is we're going to bring that back to a future meeting, that.
Well, what I'm saying is, given this, if you, if the committee's okay with that direction, then bringing it back would, with the details actually figured out, how we're going to facilitate that, and from a legal standpoint, is that something that we can enforce, is really what, this is the, the concept idea, I want to come back to the board and say, yes, these are the things we're going to do, this is how we're going to do it.
Well, I think it's important, because I think some of the residents we met with on the creek noted the water flow benefits everybody in town.
Right, right.
So the ponds, by definition, are part of the stormwater management system, so there's a benefit to everybody, so then how do we figure out the appropriate public-private costs here? I guess, so that's, I don't have a problem with what you've got here, but I still want to make sure, George and, I guess, for the full board, we bring it up formally before, we, we got to get a policy in place if we're going to do this.
Right. So this is the beginning idea, but yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Trustee Calandrello?
Ed, do you know how much residential we have left to develop? Are we talking 80/20, 20, give or take?
There's, but that's, yeah, there's about, we're about 80% built out, built out in total, so not just residential, but there's probably 20% left for all development.
Okay, so of that 20%, are we thinking?
There's large swaths of land that are owned by a residential developer, I would say, so.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
It hasn't, incorporate, some of those plans incorporate commercial, but potentially a majority of the remaining land would be developed residentially, if that's the question.
I'm just trying to think of how many developments will have this special?
About 20 to 30% of our remaining will be, if, when we build out, about 20 to 30% left as far as residential, because it'll be more residential than commercial going forward.
I would say so, yeah.
Okay. So then I would, I think we need to look into the equity part of how we can legally do the water, like we talk about the water fees, and then also, I guess, if we're looking illegally, how can we legally make sure that the homeowner's association keeps that money for stormwater and does use it to do something else? I feel like what we're protecting, at least I would think we have to protect from them using it to go put in a roof, and then there's this huge association bill coming out when they have to redo the pond. So I think we need, if we can, again, look into legally how we can make sure those funds are saved in the homeowner's association that we develop or we force, to make sure it's in the live box of water fund, I guess, of the association.
So I'm glad you mentioned that. The one portion that's not in here is how we would actually manage these. My intent is, would be to have a biannual inspection by the village of these pond facilities, and then on an annual basis, to have them submit a report that the specified maintenance was completed, right? So we would keep records of this information, and if they're deficient in somehow, that sort of would be our oversight to make sure that they're using these funds towards the ponds.
And then, thank you. And then also, how much is that's going to cost us? I mean, that's a lot of work on our side to do.
So, Trustee Calandrello, are you suggesting that we manage the finances of the HOA?
No, no. We are going to go out and inspect all the ponds and then tell the HOAs if they need to do X, Y, and Z. I mean, we're talking about, that's manpower of the village that we're using to, for lack of a better word, govern or babysit these ponds. That's all I'm saying, and there's got to be some cost on our end of manpower.
Yeah, I anticipate that there will be some level of oversight from the village, because then we avoid getting in some of the situations that we are, find ourselves currently.
And I completely understand, Ed, that's a part of the equation to think about.
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
So the only thing I have is the open fence versus the closed fence, and open fence does not impede drainage, you know, those aluminum fences, I'm pretty sure that all of our engineers, including your, and development folks here, would agree that those open fences don't do anything that impede, impede drainage, so I don't see any reason why they can't go all the way to the ground. The ones we have issues with are the solid PVC. We don't even have issues with the wood ones, because they want to keep them off the ground so they don't get wet. So generally speaking, they usually leave a gap for the wood ones, but makes sense to have that in the code for anything solid, but I think for anything that's not, that does not impede water flow, that it could go all the way to the surface.
Okay.
If someone would like to make a motion to make that change.
So moved. Second.
Anybody have any comments on that motion? Call the roll on the motion to change to allow fences that are not solid to be, to go all the way to the ground?
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye. And then I just want to get a consensus that we're going to bring something back to discuss the equity issue. I think we all agree that needs to be done. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So now you have consensus to bring that back, and then lastly, call the roll on the original motion.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 16, Raffles of Orland Park Village Code.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
Move to recommend the Village Board pass an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 16, raffles of the Orland Park Village Code.
Second.
George, could you just give us a quick summary of this?
Absolutely. So this topic came up recently regarding our raffle ordinance, and it's kind of timely because in July of 2019, the state passed Public Act 101, 109, State Raffle and Poker Runs Act, and they made some modifications. So what the proposed ordinance before you right now, what it does is it incorporates the state raffle license law, and it makes a number of other changes here. So the state law now allows, raffle chances can now be sold statewide, but they still, they have to be drawn from the, still in the corporate boundaries of the village if they're using the village of raffle licensing. And then the other one is that the right, the state, as long as they're following the village code, state raffle licenses would be able to be approved administratively, they wouldn't have to come each time before the board. The list of eligible organizations that can conduct raffles according to the estate is now included in our village ordinance, and that includes law enforcement agencies and their statewide associations. And the act, the state act previously required municipalities to establish certain limits on prize values. They removed that. Our proposed ordinance keeps that in, so there are value, that, those remain. And the act also allows sponsoring organization to utilize it through third party in connection with the raffle. And then the ordinance makes it clear that the village does not license political committees as they're licensed by the State Board of Elections. So those are, that's essentially the summary of what's before you right now.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Who's that? Trustee Dodge?
Just, George, a couple, couple things. You said the state law changed back in 19?
Yes.
So does IML, or is there another notification service that would, should notify of us of these changes? We, I guess what I'm just saying is, how do we find out when a state changes the law so we can stay in compliance?
Sure. So generally, what happens is IML, we use them as a resource, especially for these state changes, so whatever happened in July of 19, I'm not sure, but, you know, these things, they, they do kind of squeeze by, but generally, our, our existing ordinance does mirror the state act, other than these, these few fine tunings that had to happen here.
All right. One other question, Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
George, if I heard you right, you said that if someone comes in and they're fully compliant, doesn't have to come before the board, it's administrative approval. Makes perfect sense.
Right.
I guess my question is, you know, looking back over a number of these applications, we, as an organization, have not been very disciplined about making sure people apply on time. So what I'm saying is, I think we got to tighten down that process, so if the form that we currently have says, you have to get this in 30 days prior, we don't seem to do that on everyone. I've seen a few where we don't, so I don't have a problem with administrative approval. This is not necessarily a board matter if they're compliant with the law. I just want to make sure that it's noted by staff, what's the process to make sure people are complying? Because it then all comes back on you.
Yeah, and I'm going to just ask Attorney Walsh just to chime in, but I don't think there's a, there isn't a deadline about, of how, there isn't a 30-day deadline.
It's on the form, George.
Okay.
So if we need to update the form, that's a separate discussion.
You're talking about the application?
Right.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to amend the application as well.
Are we going to keep it 30 days? Because the staff's got the paper trail then. I don't have a problem with this becoming administrative, that's not my point, but it's this, I just think we need to, if they're going to have the ability to approve these things without board input, then everything about that process, including governance and report outs about how efficiently they're running, is on them. So if we need, if the 30 days stays, then we need to revise the form. Because I don't think it's specified in here about the timing.
The application definitely needs to get tweaked to be consistent.
Needs to be updated.
With this. Whether 30 days stays in there or not, I'm assuming will be a decision of the village manager.
And it would be great if they could do it entirely electronically, so there's no issues with us going out of our way to keep a piece of paper, just make it an electronic process.
Yeah. One of the, one of the softwares that we're looking at, I believe, the one that we're looking at for Development Services, I think it does a license management, so this is something that we can include in that.
Make it easy on yourself.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll. Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello? Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Picnic tables, super cooker, barricade rentals. Mr. Chairman? Trustee Malani?
I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve to discontinue the delivery of picnic tables, super cookers, and barricades to resident, organization, and business addresses.
Do I hear a second? Ray, if you could just give us a quick summary, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Prior to this year in the pandemic, we were delivering picnic tables, super cookers, and barricades to resident addresses. The cost was $27 a table for picnic tables with a 10-table minimum. Barricades, up to five barricades, were $50, and super cookers were $100. The cost of it, to deliver the super cookers would cost us, I'm sorry, the picnic tables would be $544.32. That's four men for six hours, and we would generate only $270 off of that. A super cooker, delivery, pickup, and after-use cleaning cost $78, and we earned 100, so we only earned $22 off of that. The barricade rentals were $50, and we earned, or it cost us 64.18, so we're losing on that. So for each of those, for the picnic tables and for the barricades, we were losing money on each of those. We made a marginal amount on the super cookers. Probably as important as this is that it just takes away time from our staff to do their core services. In 2021, we'll be bringing John Humphrey Complex Black on, back online. We think it's important for us to focus on the delivery of services at Centennial Park, the Outlying Fields and John Humphrey Complex, as well as producing special events with five guys in our Parks Division and our part-time staff. We want to focus on delivering excellent services there. We love to provide those services to our residents, but it is cost prohibitive, and it really does take away staff time from focusing on the core. it really does take away staff time from focusing on the core, core duties. These types of things are available for rental companies, so it's pretty easy to find a rental company, and whether you're looking for a picnic bench, a super cooker type of cooker, or even barricades, those are pretty easy to come by, and most people can rent those types of things.
Any questions or comments?
Question, Ms. Pico?
Justice Dodge?
So 14 total tables or 14 total events?
Last year was 14 total events, so 14 different rentals.
In 2019, right? Doesn't sound like a whole lot, I mean.
It wasn't. In 2017, we increased our costs, Parks Department increased the cost to cover their costs. Since then, our costs have gone up, and when the cost was changed to $27 a table at a 10-table minimum, the, the usage dropped from there.
So what you're saying is, when things are free, demand is higher, Ray? Is that how that works?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, that, you know, I guess, just broadly, we've been doing this for a while, but I just don't know if there's really all that much demand anymore for this. I don't think there's nearly the rate of gatherings or block parties that would require this, correct? Is that what you're saying?
I would, yes.
Okay.
I think the, the other key point here is that these can be rented privately, so we're taking away business from rental businesses that are in town, and, you know, potentially undercutting and subsidizing it with tax money. I mean, it's a, it's a small, small amount, I mean, yeah, no one wants to lose three grand on picnic tables, but it's a small amount. I think the bigger, the big two issues are, is one is we're taking away business from our business, businesses in town, and two, we're tying up our staff on delivering these when we'd rather be delivering our core services. There are, you know, no one else takes care of our fields, there are plenty of people who, plenty of companies that deliver picnic tables and super cookers, so.
And then three is, one, workers' comp would, would blow the budget on any type of revenue that we'd collect.
Yeah, a back or something like that, moving a table.
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay, any other comments? Call the roll.